Okay, everybody, good morning and welcome to July 9, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting. It's a little different this morning, it's the first meeting for new elected Planning Commissioners, so staff kind of starts the meeting, gets the elections going, and then once the Chair is elected, then the Chair takes over for the Planning Commission. So as far as roll call vote, it looks like everybody is here. Rich Marsh is not going to be here today, Cassie. Yep. And also, so item number one, introduction and welcome of new Planning Commissioners. We have today two new Planning Commissioners, Sandra Rundy down there on the end, and returning Planning Commissioner Jim Coleman over here. Any words to anybody, any speeches?
I like humble.
All right, then we'll get into the elections of officers. And just going to go through real quick what's in the bylaws for the election of officers and officer duties. Section 4.0, the officers of the commission shall consist of a chairperson, vice-chairperson, and second-chairperson, and the board member of a commission shall be ineligible to hold office. Sorry, Mark. The chairperson shall preside at all meetings and hearings of the commission, call all special meetings, sign all documents or actions of the commission, including but not limited to plaques and minutes. Rule shall rule on all points of order and procedures, and direct staff on preparation of agendas, minutes of the meetings, reports, publications, research, and other commission report functions. The vice-chairperson shall act for the chairperson in the chairperson's absence, and the second vice-chair shall act if the chairperson and the vice-chairperson are absent. As far as elections of the officers go, the annual organizational meeting shall be held during the first regular meeting of July, which is today. The elections of the officers shall be held at the organizational meeting, and nominations may be made by a member of the board or by the public. A candidate receiving a majority of the written ballots cast by the members shall be declared elected for the term for that position of one year. That's why you have the peach-colored papers in front of you for the written ballots. Officer vacancies shall be filed immediately by regular election procedures, and the board shall be advised of the results of all elections. So with that, I'd like to open up nominations for a chairperson for July 2018 through June 2019 for the Painton County Planning Commission.
I nominate the following slate for Travis Lassiter for Chair, Rich Marsh for First Vice Chair, and Sunny Rivers for Second Vice Chair.
I can't remember, do those need to be seconded? No, I didn't think so. Any other nominations? Any nominations from the public? I got asked three times. Any other nominations? Public? Okay. So with that, we're looking at Travis Lassiter for Chair. Vice Chair would be Rich Marsh, and I'm sorry, what was the second?
Second Vice Chair, Sunny Rivers.
And Sunny Rivers for Second Vice Chair. With that, if you could fill out your ballots, then you could put all the names on one ballot if you'd like, and then pass those down to your right, to Cassie, and she can check to see if everybody's in concurrence with that.
What are we doing? Write all three names?
What, you want them to write?
If you're in agreement with that, yeah, just write all three names down and then pass it over. So it was Travis for Chair, Rich for First Vice Chair, and Sunny for Second Vice Chair. And we need a majority. And Cassie, it's going to be a majority of those present today, so we'll need four.
Okay. Okay, so the first one, Chair Lassiter, Vice Chair Marsh, and Second Vice Chair Rivers. And the second one, Chair Travis, First Vice Chair Rich Marsh, Second Vice Chair Sunny Rivers. Third one, Chair Travis, First Vice Chair. This one says First Vice Chair Sunny, Second Vice Chair Rich. This one says Travis for Chair, Rich for Vice Chair, Sunny for Second Vice Chair. Travis Chair, Rich Vice Chair, Sunny Second Vice Chair. And last one, Chair Travis, Vice Chair Rich, Second Vice Chair Sunny.
Okay, with a majority votes, then it'd be Travis Lassiter for Chair of the Planning Commission, Rich Marsh for First Vice Chair, and Sunny Rivers for Second Vice Chair. Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Travis, I'll hand a meeting over to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. And welcome aboard, Sunny, when we're not here. Woo-hoo, me and Rich, you, awesome. All right. So the next thing is approval of June 25, 2018 minutes. Was there any corrections? Did everyone get a chance to see them all? And if they did, are there any corrections or additions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Motion by Kathy. And Sunny, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of today's agenda. I take it everyone got to see today's agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Motion of Mark. Sunny and Mark, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. PJ, consent agenda. Oh, hold on one quick second. Public, just so you know, if there is, if you'd like to get an agenda for today, they're back on the back shelf, back there by Wardan Hancock, which is standing, so if you want to follow along with us, please go ahead and pick up an agenda for you. Sorry about that, PJ.
Oh, no problem, yeah, I forgot to do that. All right, consent agenda. The following audience have been placed on a consent agenda for actions to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the Planning Commission staff member or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission or recommendations to the Painton County Board of Commissioners will make the final decisions. Item five is Conditional Use Permit Review 9159 for Melissa Earnhardt to review a single-wide mobile home in a single-family residence in the suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 9159 with three conditions. Item six, Conditional Use Permit Review 9937 for Bob Young to review a mobile home park in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of Conditional Use Permit 9937 to the August 13, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item seven, Conditional Use Permit Review 0820 for David and Karen Malden to review a bed and breakfast as a home occupation in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit 0820 with the applicant's concurrence. Item eight, Conditional Use Permit Review 1117 for Dwayne Brink, LLP Investments Limited Partnership to review a well-drilling business and accessory exterior equipment and material storage in a highway service district. Staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit 1117. Item nine, Conditional Use Permit 1536 for Donald and Margaret Norton to review an existing shop building with living quarters to be used as a guest house on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1536 with five conditions. Item 10, Conditional Use Permit Review 1723 for Cliff Dahl to review an existing structure of a subject property to include the addition of a new pole-frame building on the subject property in a limited agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1723 with six conditions. Item 11, Conditional Use Permit Review 1724 for Chase and Leslie Larson to review an internally illuminated sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling in a general agriculture district, and staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1724 with six conditions. Item 12, Major Plan Unit Development Amendment Review 1701 for Karen Moore to review the existing plan unit development to allow for a specialty and recreational resort. Staff recommends to continue the review of Major Plan Unit Development Amendment 1701 to the August 13, 2000, I'm sorry, yeah, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item 13, Major Plan Unit Development Amendment 1703 for Chris Hamm, KTM Design Solutions Incorporated, as the agent to review the existing plan unit development zoning district to allow for additional storage units and to allow for single-family residents to be used as a caretaker's residence for the storage units, and to allow for future commercial uses, and to allow a car wash facility in accordance with Section 213. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Major Plan Unit Development 1703 with 20 conditions. Item 14, Conditional Use Permits 1821 for David and Lee Byers to review a single-family residence in a highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the Conditional Use Permit 1821 with eight conditions. And the last one. Item 15, Conditional Use Permit 1824 for Plains View Mobile Manor, Ernest and Christine as the agents to review an existing mobile home park and bring it into compliance for Plains View Mobile Manor in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue Conditional Use Permit 1824 to the July 23, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.
Are there any items that staff would like to have pulled?
No, sir.
All right, any membership members? Any item that you would like pulled off the consent agenda?
Number nine.
Anyone else? Are there any?
Number 11?
Number 11. Any other items from the membership? Seeing none, anyone in the audience like any of the items that were just read to be pulled from the consent agenda so they can be talked about individually? Seeing none. I take that as that leaves our consent agenda as items five through eight.
Move for approval.
10. Hold on, I didn't get all the numbers yet. 10, and let's see, 12 through 15.
Move for approval.
Second.
A second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number nine.
Good morning, Frank Waiseth, Planner Two.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Kind of a clarification.
Sure.
So this particular property, they have taken a bedroom out of the house somehow and then transferred that sort of septic liability to the guest house, is that correct?
Yes, last year during the review of this, it was discovered that the size of the current septic system could not handle three bedrooms in the main house plus an additional bedroom in the guest house. So rather than, you know, going through, installing or upgrading a new septic there, they converted one existing bedroom in the house to an office to allow that additional bedroom in the guest house, so it's currently sized for the number of bedrooms that exist on the property.
They do that by simply removing the closet, or how do they do that?
Let me see, I believe there's some photos in here. But yes, they removed the closet and provided photos of the work they had done to show that it is not being used as potential bedroom. This is the guest house here.
All right, I just wanted a clarification. It wasn't quite sure to me whether they were going to expand the septic system or had, or whether they were simply removing, repurposing, or redefining the office slash bedroom in the house.
Yeah, they have essentially repurposed that, so it will not be used as a bedroom, as to not, you know, overtax the septic system as it's currently sized. And these are the pictures they provided last year during the review of the, I can see they, it's being used as an office with built-in storage rather than a closet in a typical bedroom.
Does removal of a closet then make it a non-bedroom?
That has been used as a criteria. It's not the only explicit criteria as to what a bedroom is defined in our ordinance, but it was approved for this use when it was reviewed, when it was reviewed last year.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions? Any item, any audience members like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, the recommendation is to approve the extension of the Conditional Use Permit CU 1536 with five conditions.
Need a motion?
Need a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 11.
I asked for this to be pulled, just because I'd like to understand a little more about what the plan is for this sign.
Basically, what this sign is, is it's just a very small sign attached to a flagpole that just basically is, it's, to my understanding, I haven't actually seen the sign at night, but to my understanding, it's internally illuminated, not very bright. Basically, they have a recreational resort on this property that has four cabins, four rental cabins.
Right.
So it's just kind of an internally illuminated sign that has the name of their cabins on it so that people can find it at night. But it's attached to a flagpole. So it's like a flagpole, and then the sign comes out from the side of the flagpole.
I see. It just seemed to me to be a little bit inconsistent when, you know, I don't, I guess I don't understand how an internally illuminated sign can comply with the conditions of there's no spillage of light outside of the sign face, and the sign must be effectively shielded to prevent beams or rays from being directed toward any portion of the adjacent traveled roadway. I don't quite understand how, I mean, I can understand if the light is shining on the sign, but if the light is shining from inside the sign, it's just by definition going to be out the way from the sign, isn't it?
Like I said, I haven't seen this particular sign at night, so I've never seen it actually lit. My understanding from it would be it'd be similar to like an open sign lit that way, you know, internally neon-type style.
Yeah, I, you know, I take the ordinances seriously that we have, and it's, you know, this is an exception to the, you know, 1,500 feet lighted signs within 1,500 feet of a residence. And so I think, I'd like to learn more about what this is, you know, they really have in mind here.
I think this sign is already up. Because this is a Conditional Use Permit Review from last year, I think this sign is already up. I've just never seen it lit.
I see.
But I think it's already there.
Okay.
Have there been any complaints?
No.
Yeah.
No?
Well, if it's already up there and it's already lit, then I'm not seeing it, because I drive by there every day, and so I've not noticed it either, so I guess it's okay.
Yeah, I would imagine it's probably only lit in the evenings and potentially only lit when they have people coming in the evening.
Okay, all right, fair enough, thank you.
You said it's not large, and that's relative, I mean, two feet by three feet?
It's a relatively small sign. According to their site plan, it's only five feet wide. So it's a relatively small sign.
All right, any further questions? Any members of the audience like to speak on this item? Seeing none. Current recommendation is to approve of the extension, pardon me, approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit CU 1724 with six conditions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 16.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item number 16 is a special consideration to Trailwood Village Plan Unit Development. It's a consideration to reduce the minimum front yard setback from 15 feet to zero feet to allow for the construction of a garage. As the property exists today, it's in a plan unit development for Trailwood Village. It's .16 acres. Access is off of Gypsy Road using an existing approach. Contains a single-family residence and a deck, and it's connected to Rapid Valley Sanitary District. This request was routed through the environmental review process, and there were some items of concern raised from our county highway department. The highway department was opposed to granting this request since there's adequate area to the northeast for the garage. The structures adjacent to the right-of-way lines are uncharacteristic of this development, and also a structure northwest of and adjacent to a 50-foot right-of-way of Heather Lane may cause drifting snow across Heather Lane. Rapid City Community Planning also had concerns that allowing a zero-foot setback does not provide for maintenance of the structure without utilizing the adjacent right-of-way. In addition, there were concerns that there may be possible easements on this property, so it would encroach on easements. Staff did verify on the plat that there are no easements currently. And the Rapid City Public Works said that they did not support a zero-foot setback in developed areas. History of Trailwood Village subdivision, it was originally rezoned in 1976. There have been several reviews and amendments subsequently. This PUD was most recently approved in 2005. And then prior to the most recent PUD amendment, PU 0519, meeting minutes dated May 21, 1990, state that any time there is a deviation from these guidelines set forth in the PUD, that the permit must be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. Thus, the Planning Commission specifically has the authority to waive the setback requirements or any other requirements of the conditions of the Trailwood Village PUD. And the analysis of the PUD, Condition 9 of the Plan Unit Development states that all subcollective streets have the following setback requirements: 15 feet on the front, 16 feet between buildings as a side yard, and 25 feet on the rear. Because this property abuts to Heather Lane and Gypsy Lane, it actually has two fronts that abut Gypsy Lane and Heather Lane. If you look at the aerial, Heather Lane does actually dead-end there, and that property behind there is a drainage easement. Staff feels the likelihood of that street actually going through is probably not going to happen as there's other residences on the other side that don't have an easement for any kind of right-of-way. One last thing. Through research, staff has found that there are other special considerations to the plan unit development that are similar to the applicant's request. Staff is recommending approval of this special consideration. However, we are requesting that the backyard, front yard setback be setback from 15 feet to five feet, and to allow for the construction of a 12-foot by 30-foot garage. The reason for the reduction in the garage is because West River Electric did make comment, I apologize for going back to that one, that they would like eight-foot clearance between where their lines are and where the garage would be. In the conversation with the applicant, she had acknowledged that there was 11 feet from the house to their existing proposed garage, so that would only allow for a 30-foot deep garage. So that's staff's recommendation. I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Was there any consideration by the fire?
No, I didn't receive any comments from him on this request.
Creates an awfully crowded piece of property with very small areas to get between with equipment and hoses. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Kathy, is that, I mean, you have something? Okay, I didn't know, I heard you kind of...
I'm thinking, but thank you anyway, no.
No worries.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Any possibility that this could be, you know, relocated in the backyard as opposed to, or is there still running into the same sort of limitations in terms of setbacks?
There appears to be room in the backyard. There is a West River Electric line that goes through there, but the applicant is in the audience, so she could answer some questions if you have specific questions to that. If it was in the backyard, the driveway would have to be extended out and around, or a second approach would have to be granted off of Heather Lane.
Okay. All right, any further questions for staff? Thank you. Any members of the audience like to speak on this? Go ahead, come forward and give us your name and...
I'm Heather Jansen, I'm the applicant. And the West River Electric line, it's actually, and I wrote it in my letter, it's 18.5 inches from the corner of my house all the way back to their lines. So the 32-foot isn't going to affect, that leaves nine feet, three inches clearance, which is more than their eight-foot. I was at work when she called me, and I didn't have my outline in front. So I'd like that clarified. There is no other way to put this in the backyard because I'd have to put a garage or a cement over top of the West River lines, which they'd only go wanting near it, so... And then I have two fire hydrants. I have one on the very corner of the property by the approach or the driveway, and then one at the very back, like six feet from the back corner of my property. They were supposed to put it in the drainage ditch, but the line ends, so they stuck it right there. So I have no way to even come and ask for a right-of-way. West River Electric comes almost halfway through the property line, so there's no way to put it anywhere else as far as that's concerned. And there's no utilities right where I want to build it. There, and because of the fire hydrants, you're not going to widen the road that direction. You're not going to make them move the fire hydrants and things like that. So I'm struggling a little with why I can't have the zero setback. I've been there 23 years, and I struggle with a disability too, so I need everything to be like orderly and being able to set up room to do things and adjust for that kind of stuff. So I'd like, I plan to make things as easy as possible for myself. And as I get older, I'm going to need it even more easy.
Are you saying then that you are not comfortable with the five-foot setback that you...
I'm not. I would prefer this, I'm afraid that the narrowness of being able to get a vehicle in and out, and then to be able to put the tool, stuff, and things along the side, I'm not going to be able to get in and out of the vehicle. That's my concern.
I see.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Kathy.
I just, I didn't quite understand the 11 versus nine and a half feet or nine feet some inches. I'm not tracking there. Could you kind of slow down and explain that part of it?
Yes, so I called the utility people to come out and tell me where all of my lines were so that I could draw up the, it's on this page. I can barely see my markings, but to draw all of my lines and actually outline the structure of the garage. And so then I went out and I measured from the corner side of my house with one foot in and went all the way back to where their actual line is. And that allowed still the nine feet, three inches from where the end of my garage would be to where West River Electric line is.
This assuming the 32-foot garage?
Correct.
So even with the 32-foot garage, you've still got over nine feet clearance between the garage and the line, and West River Electric has specified eight. So you're within that, okay, I see.
But is that with or without the zero setback?
Well, that's to the back. That's going past the house. That's, the zero setback is in relation to the width.
I see.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Sunny.
Question maybe is for Brittany, but where did the 30 feet come in instead of 32?
That came from our conversation. When I spoke to her, she had indicated it was 11 feet. So in order to, with the distances, in order to make sure that West River Electric had their eight feet. So it would have shrunk that two feet.
I was at work, I didn't have the outline. I was at work, I didn't have the outline in front of me. And so by the time I got this, it was Friday after work, and I couldn't call and say, look, you know... But it was, it's also in the letter that I wrote in here where I outlined how long it was.
You feel that 32 feet would fit within your eight-foot setback from the line? And do you concur with that, Brittany?
If she's correct in her measurements.
Okay. So that part sounds all right.
I did measure it personally, so I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Mark, go ahead.
You don't know, the highway department didn't mention any plans for putting in a sidewalk or anything like that in the future on Heather Lane, did they?
No, they did not.
Okay.
All right, any further questions?
I was wondering if, so you, staff recommended a five-foot setback on the front, five-foot?
Right.
Right?
Instead of zero.
Yeah. Couldn't three-foot be used, or is there a reason that five is the minimum?
We just recommended five feet, so it would give, you know, if they had to do right-of-way work or if they had to do maintenance on their structure, that they would have adequate space to do that and bring equipment in. And also, she requested a 17 by 32. Five-foot would at least give her a 12-foot, which is a standard one-car garage width.
Well, based on standard widths, right. Three-foot would be, I've seen buildings up to three feet close to the, that's enough room to walk around and...
Most people didn't want any, I mean, they wanted it to stay where, you know, the standard was required, so that's...
Because there would be only five feet between the garage and the building. Is, do you feel that's enough space between your house and the garage?
When I brought in the builder, he said that that would, he could actually put it up against, but I have a window on that side. And then there would be cost, there would be more cost because of the fire code, because you'd have to sheet rock it and then stuff like that. So looking at it, the, in between the building, I wouldn't want to go any closer to the building than what it is.
It just occurred to me as my personal thoughts, if you could get a three-foot setback and then put a little space between your... It just occurred to me as my personal thoughts, if you could get a three foot setback and then put a little space between your house and your garage if that worked. Or maybe you have a couple more feet width in your garage than, you know, just somewhere in the middle to meet what you're looking for and what staff recommends.
Right. And I had to kind of consult with the builder since I'm not really, I trust his judgment on it. You know, if, if he can put it closer to the house and still not affect the fire code and stuff like that, then that would be.
Do you feel that you'll need to speak to your builder again, given the changes that are gonna happen here and?
I'll do whatever you guys recommend. You know, I just wanted you to hear. I've been there a really long time. I don't plan on staying there until I die, so. You know, I just, I need easy.
Yeah, I'm thinking of ways.
I'm self-sufficient, you know, and even though with my disability and things like that and I do the home studying type stuff. So I would kind of need a garage so that my neighbors don't have to watch all that stuff.
Yeah, I'm thinking of ways to get as close to what you're looking for as possible.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Would that three foot, if we did a three foot setback, would it allow for your things to get out, in and out of your car with the way you want your garage?
I believe so, yes.
The three foot would?
Okay, any further questions? Any other audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? Thank you very much, Heather. All right, current recommendation is approval of special consideration to the Trailwood Village Plan Unit Development. P U eighteen oh four to reduce the minimum front yard setback from fifteen to five with the following two conditions. Is there a motion?
I move that that be accepted.
Motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies due to no second. I know we discussed a little bit, maybe some changes in there, maybe that's what we're thinking about is allowing the garage to be thirty-two feet still. Is that what you were getting at, Sonny, when you were discussing?
I feel like maybe we should continue this so that there's more time that they can figure out exactly the maximum size of that garage that's possible. Since given the garage can be longer than the thirty feet. And maybe even the setback could be a little bit smaller to give you a couple feet of extra width. So I would make a motion then to continue this perhaps our next meeting.
Okay, there's a motion to continue for clarification. I'm inclined to agree with that, but motion to continue, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. What, Kathy, what date is that next meeting?
July twenty-third.
July twenty-third, all right. All right, that takes us item number seventeen.
Item number seventeen is another special consideration to the Trailwood Village Plan Unit Development. It is a special consideration to reduce the front yard setback from twenty-five feet to eighteen feet to allow for an addition to an existing residence. As it exists today, its own planned year development, it's point one five acres. The access is on Shop Johnson Drive via an existing approach. The lot contains a single family residence with attached garage, porch and deck. And it is connected to Rapid Valley Sanitary District. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. There was some concerns that came back from county highway. They believe that they don't appear to even meet the current setbacks and are requesting some kind of location survey prior to any kind of building or approval of this request. The Rapid City Community Planning also had concerns allowing the reduced setback. They wanted to ensure that there was a twenty foot minimum parking apron in the, in front of the garage. If you look at On Johnson Drive, it's kind of like a little bump out cul-de-sac. So through traffic doesn't go through there. That little cul-de-sac essentially provides access for two properties at this time. And the public works, at the time when this was routed, he did not provide a site plan. I did call the applicant and he did provide a site plan. And he believes that there is adequate room there to meet the eighteen foot setback. We are just not sure where the property pins are, if they are at the end of the sidewalk, prior to the sidewalk or further. But staff is recommending approval to allow the eighteen foot setback with two conditions. And one condition being that a survey from a registered professional land survey is completed showing that most setbacks to a single family residence attached garage and proposed addition is conducted prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, any audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? Come on up, sir.
Morning. My name's Tom Weller. I'm the owner of the residence.
Okay.
And I did find a survey spike out there. If you look well.
Like this corner right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if you look at that, I guess, so they're looking at the right side corner of the house. I found that that survey spike and it is twenty-six point five feet from, from the house to that spike.
So still still get a bona fide surveyor out there?
I'm sorry?
You, you will still get a licensed surveyor out there to?
Well, I mean, if I have to, but I don't know there's a reason to, since there is that spike already, survey spike there.
Okay, I was just trying to clarify.
Yeah, I know, cause at that, at that time, we couldn't find that.
I see. Thank you.
We weren't following the curve of the, of the cul-de-sac, that's how they were.
Sure.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
So Brittany, I'd assume that you go out and check and make sure that survey spike's there and then, and then that gets rid of that condition would be my assumption.
We do not, cause we don't have building codes, so we don't go out and verify. What's submitted by the applicant is what's taken as what it is.
I can take a picture of it if you like.
You know what, I'm gonna come out and visit Heather anyway, so I'll come by and look at yours.
All right, is there any further questions for the applicant?
I have one for Brittany.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so with the idea that there is a spike out there that you've located now, does that then mean that condition number one is no longer, is no longer relevant?
Well, he does have a house location survey. It looks like it was done by Mr. Hale, who was a registered land surveyor. So this wasn't provided to me prior to writing the conditions.
So condition number one, so condition number one has already been satisfied essentially. Is that right?
There's been a location survey.
Right, okay, I see.
So I guess it would be even, even if you kept that condition, he already has it. So he could submit this with his building permit.
I see, okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
No worries.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion and a second. All, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number.
Get me your phone number.
That takes us to item number eighteen. He wants your phone number, Tom.
Seven eight six four one one zero.
Now the whole world knows.
Thank you.
You're on the internet.
Thank you.
Item number eighteen, PJ.
And just real quick, the special consideration, just so you know, sort of the history that we know of, that PUD is huge. And if anybody wanted to do a variance to an ordinance if there wasn't special consideration, it'd be about three thousand dollars plus just in mailings alone to the applicant. That's why this is kind of put in place, just one of the many reasons.
Sure.
Got you.
Okay, so item eighteen is conditional use permit eighteen twenty-two to allow for an existing single family residence. Sorry, I've lost my place here, to be used as a vacation home rental on a subject property in low density residential district. The applicant is Hayards Hills LLC, Rodney Sather as the owner. Local contact is Cherylene Groves and property is currently three point five nine acres and again, it's low density residential district. On the property, there is a single family residence and one lean to outbuilding on the south side of the property. The aerial photo that you can see on the screens kind of shows the structure on the south, kind of crossing the south property line. However, these come from rapid map databases and those property lines are not accurate. Staff did confirm that that property line does not cross the structure. It's actually located on the property to the south. And we confirmed that through a stamped survey from another building permit for the property to the south. So what you see there, that, that building is, that structure to the south is not out of compliance. This was routed through an interdepartmental review and no items of concern came back. One item of note that staff did notice is that there are two approaches on the property. Staff ultimately does not, does not asking to continue this item until the second approach can be looked at and, or, and considered by the board of commissioners. But we did put in a condition that prior to operation, that that be taken care of at the board of commissioners level. When the house was originally applied for with the building permit, the applicant did indicate a single approach, which is the one to the west, not the one closest to the highway. It looks like it has been there since the structure has been, or was constructed. Staff has not had any dealings with the landowners since that structure has been, I think actually it's been Mr. Sather since that time. There's been no complaints about that second approach, however, according to county regulations, only the board of commissioners can approve a second approach. So it's something we'll have to work with the applicant on. The applicant did also provide the necessary paperwork to apply for the vacation home rental. We did get the letter from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources that they can have up to six people per day. So that kind of allows only six people, not the double or one point five times during the day. So they're gonna keep it at six per what DNR had indicated in their letter. And again, there's been no concerns raised to our office by phone calls or letters. I know there is one individual in the audience for this item today. And with that, staff would recommend approval of conditional use permit eighteen twenty-two with twenty conditions.
Thank you, PJ. Any questions for staff?
The, the two curb cut accesses, is the one, is it the one on the east or the one in the west that is in addition to whatever was originally approved?
From what I can best consider from the plans from the original building permit, this was the original and this was the addition.
I see, the one in the east and closest to, to the road.
Correct.
I see.
And for the, just so you know, as your first meeting, the applicant would just need to get on the agenda to be with the board of commissioners and we would help them put a, put a presentation together. They would talk about the history of the second approach. Usually the second approach isn't there. And they're kind of saying why they need one. It just takes an action by the board of commissioners to get a second approach if anything can be.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Further questions for staff? All right, any items, any members of the audience like to speak on this item? All right.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nineteen.
Okay. Item nineteen is something. Kathy Bosted, Assistant Planning Director. Item nineteen is a layout plat eighteen seventeen. This is a plat to create lots three A and three B of Snyder subdivision. The applicant is Jeffrey Reed. The surveyor is Shannon Vasknet. As this property exists today, it is one parcel. It is ten point zero one acres. It is zone limited agriculture district. Access to this property is off of Triple S Drive and it currently contains a machine shop. As they are proposing to do this, they are proposing to subdivide this into lot three A, which would be approximately four point seven four two acres. And lot three B, which would be approximately four point seven two eight acres. There is a previously plotted drain field easement that looks like it will remain with this plat that will straddle the property lines. Neither one of these properties will meet the minimum lot size requirement for a limited agriculture district. So rezone or lot size variance will be required before the plat can be filed with the register of deeds. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. There was a couple items of correction that came back regarding a few minor things that needed to be adjusted with the plat. There was one item, however, that I do want to bring to attention. The Department of Equalization did mention that there are covenants and restrictions with this property that limits the ability of subdividing to smaller than ten acres. I bring that up because it was a comment that came back. However, I do want to remind the planning commission that the county does not enforce covenants and restrictions outside of the vacation home rental ordinance. But I did want to bring it up since it was a comment that came back. If the property owners out there did have a concern with it being subdivided less than ten acres, they would have to take that up swiftly through their homeowners association. So staff did find that there is a machine shop on this property. On July third, staff did speak with the applicant just to verify that this is a machine shop. It's not currently a residence. The applicant at that time did state that it's not a residence right now. They do have plans to convert it into a residence, but currently it is an unfinished machine shop. There is no septic system out there at this time. So staff is recommending approval of layout plat eighteen seventeen with eleven conditions.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, I have a question. If covenants are not enforced, why have them?
They're enforceable through the homeowners association.
And I guess my comment is, I live in an area that has covenants. It indicates there's an association, but there isn't. But, but I question changing, you know, the criteria outlined in covenants. Because once you change one, then you change another, then the covenants become, you know.
But that's up to the homeowners association board to enforce the covenant. So someone goes outside of the covenant, it's up to the board, it's not the county. We shouldn't take on that legal responsibility to get into any of that fight. That should be the homeowners association and the, and the private landowner.
Yeah, but we're legally changing the layout of the lot in violation to the covenants. Is that correct?
You'd, you'd be subdividing the property.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So what are the, what are the notifications required for these, these preliminary layouts? These, for these layout plats? Have all the neighbors been notified?
With plats, there is no notification requirement.
But the rezone, so the way this works, if I'm, just so I make sure, so in order to get this, this, this is the, this is the layout plat.
Yes.
But in order to get the plat actually filed, then, but the, the rezone or the, or the variance has to be approved.
Yes, yes, and those do require notification.
And those require notification. So the neighbors in this homeowner's area will be notified when they either one, apply for variance or two, apply for the rezoning?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Any further questions for staff?
PJ just reminded me to, to let you guys know that this is just the first step in the plating process. They still have to go through a minor plat before this can be filed or anything along those lines. So they still have to do a minor plat and they still have to do the rezone or the lot size variance. So this is just the very beginning.
And all of the owners of the entire subdivision are just within so many linear feet will be notified?
If they apply for the rezone, they have to notify everybody within five hundred feet of the property and all ag property within two miles. If they apply for the variance, they only have to notify everybody within five hundred feet of the property.
So they're neighbors.
Yeah, they're neighbors.
Since they're ten acre lots, they're just gonna be their neighbors.
Yep. All right, any further questions for staff? Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? All right, seeing none, current recommendation is approve, staff recommends approval of layout plat PL eighteen dash seventeen with the following eleven conditions. Is there a motion?
I remove approval.
A second.
Motion by Jim, second by Sonny. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number twenty.
Item number twenty, this might look familiar to a few of you. Item number twenty, this is a layout plat request to reconfigure lot lines to create Glendale tract and Hermosa tract. The applicant here is T D G Real Estate or Mike Gennaro. The surveyor is Buckhorn Surveying. This prop- is Buckhorn Surveying. This property, um, actually came before you guys, um, about a month ago, maybe. Um, they originally wanted to subdivide these two, um, mining claims into four lots. Um, you guys had concern with it and actually denied it at this level. Um, the Board of Commissioners also had concern with it. Um, however, Mr. Gennaro was at that time, um, amendable to just subdividing this into two lots. Um, so the Board of Commissioners denied it as well, um, recommending that he come back with a different configuration. So that's essentially what he's doing. Um, now he's just going to subdivide these into one lot to the north of Oak Meadow Road and one lot to the south of Oak Meadow Road. Um, Glendale tract would be about 5.12 acres. Hermosa tract would be about 4.08 acres. Um, he still requires a lot size variance or a rezone, um, but they could be rezoned at this time. They would meet the requirement for a low density residential district, which is a little more fitting for that area. Um, and so this is just kind of his shot number two. Um, again, this was routed through the interdepartmental review process. Just a few correction items, um, that need to be corrected on the plat, but nothing of significant concern. Um, so staff is recommending approval of layout plat 1819, um, with 11 conditions.
Go ahead. Questions for staff? No. All right.
I would move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 21.
Item 21 is another layout plat. This one is PL 1818 to reconfigure lot lines to create lot 1R and lot 2R of 40 Oaks subdivision. I'm just gonna bring it up there for you. The applicant is, uh, Dan Wharton. The other landowners are David and Laura Jones. The surveying, uh, company is Renton Associates and looking at 7.31 acres. This is an interior lot line adjustment so that the landowner to the east, which is proposed lot 2R, uh, can build a garage and not have to come in for a variance. Again, this is just a layout plat. This is the very beginning process. Um, this was routed through the interdepartmental review. No items of concern came back. Um, lot 1R would decrease, proposed lot 1R, uh, would decrease from its existing size by, uh, .11 acres and proposed lot 2R would increase by .11 acres. Um, the utility and drainage easement that is located on the plat would be vacated through this planning process and a new minor drainage and utility easement will be created on the new proposed interior lot line. And with that, staff would recommend approval layout plat 1818 with nine conditions.
Any questions for staff?
I recommend approval. Or I, I, I move to accept the recommendation for approval.
All right. Motion to approve. Uh, Mark.
Second for discussion.
Seconded by Mark. Uh, we're open for discussion. Go ahead, Mark.
Just to verify PJ, one lot, lot 1R is gonna be 3.8 acres. Lot 2R is gonna be 4.2?
Uh, according to the surveying agents, what's on the screen, lot 1R is gonna be 3.02.
Okay.
If she, 2R, yeah. So they'll still meet the three, three acre minimum lot size for LDR.
Okay.
Low density residential.
Good enough.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 22.
Item 22 is conditional use permit 1823, uh, for BCS Investment LLC. Kevin Haberstroh as the applicant and agent. This property is 22.08 acres. Um, it's currently zoned general commercial and, um, uh, general agriculture. Now, if you remember, this property was before you some time ago, um, when it was, when we changed the front part of this property from highway service to general commercial so that the new applicants, the Haberstros, could do a, uh, car sales lot, which is what's there today. So when you're leaving the airport, this is right in front of you. If you can look on the screen, you can see where the red line is, which indicates the floodway that's located on the property. So a large portion of the property is floodway. What we had done is we ran the rezoning along the floodway border. So everything to the south is general agriculture and the property to the north is, uh, general commercial. So because the proposed, well, a desired use in a special flood hazard area is agricultural. So that's why they kept the south part of that lot that way. Um, as I stated, there is a current, uh, car sales, let's see if I can get some pictures here, car sales lot on the subject property. There is a section line that has, that appears to go through the property, but that was vacated, uh, by book page, book 200, 206 and page 73111. So one of the comments that came back from a couple of the people we routed to was make sure the section line was vacated and we had already known and it was, but it's nice that they commented on it and had us look again. Um, it's indicated there is special flood hazard area on the subject property. Um, this was routed through the interdepartmental review. One item that came back was from the Rapid City Public Works Engineering, uh, Department. Not necessarily an item of immediate concern, but just wanted to make sure that any of the height requirements from city ordinances, but especially for our consideration, the FAA Part 72 are followed. Um, that can be up to a six to eight month process if the applicant chooses to go through it. In talking with our contact in, oh, I think it's North Dakota from the FAA, we created a document for applicants to sign that fall within, um, Part 77, um, pattern around the airport, that they sign the document that says we've informed them of the, of the need and if they feel that they meet certain criteria, they need to apply with the FAA to get the approval. There are exceptions and exemptions and if they feel that they meet those exemptions, then they don't have to apply. But our only responsibility according to FAA is that we need to let the landowner know. And that's what our document does. So that's how we're handling that comment. Um, the county environmental planning supervisor plus our highway department was concerned of the possible, uh, impervious, um, surface that might be increased on the property if they choose to concrete or asphalt the property. Right now it's just gravel. Um, so if that is increased, um, they're looking to have, um, I studied them just to, to make sure that other areas, other adjoining properties aren't going to be affected by the increased water flows from stormwater. Uh, this was also routed through the Rapid City Community Planning, where they indicated that storage units appear to be in appropriate use within close proximity to the airport and that, uh, access to the property should be taken from South Airport Road, which it is currently, and, uh, designed to ensure that it does not conflict with the street's functioning as a principal arterial street. There are five factors to consider with the, of the conditional use permit. We're trying something a little different here so we don't read them off every time. Um, so factor number one, we do believe that the proposed storage unit should not affect the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Um, and we do need to look at that possible stormwater runoff. Factor number two, allowing storage units should not affect the normal orderly development of, uh, the surrounding vacant properties. Uh, factor number three, the storage units should not, uh, require any means of wastewater disposal, water to be provided and all of the utilities such electricity and septic are already in place. Item number four, um, they would be required to have four off-street parking spaces for the storage units. They have plenty of room on that subject property for more than four. Item number five, uh, the proposal should not create any of the above, um, listed items in factor five. Any amounts that would create a nuisance and that all exterior lighting needs to be pointed downwards, um, and not up into the air again, especially because the airport is there and also for, um, light pollution. Uh, there are other commercial uses in the immediate vicinity such as storage units across the street. I guess I don't have a good aerial of that. Um, there are storage units across the street. There's also a West River Electric Utility Substation directly to the east across the street. Um, the applicant's proposing six storage units and caretaker's residence, um, and also to be constructed within two phases. And I believe that was indicated in your staff reports. Um, the non-residential land uses are encouraged in areas near and in, uh, special flood hazard areas. So just because it's not, um, doesn't have a, a line on a map that says, you know, that's where the flood's gonna stop, doesn't mean it's not gonna go over. Um, so the proposed uses, um, are, are desirable. The most desirable is keeping nothing there, but, you know, we understand it's not always possible. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1823, 23 with 18 conditions.
Any questions for staff? All right. Seeing none. Would any, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none. Current recommendation is to approve CU 1823 with the following 18 conditions. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 23.
Item 23 is the county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurrent with the planning commission's recommendation from the June 25th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. One item of note from July 3rd, 2008, the Board of Commissioners approved minor plat 1810 and subdivision regulation variance 1803 to waive the requirement to construct a turnaround on the Johnston property. That was one you guys recommended denial on.
Is that that one, uh, which one was that one?
Two, the turnaround's there is to put it, the, to draw it on the plat itself.
Okay.
Because, um, staff wanted that because they might, they're not always gonna own the property. And so we wanted, the next owner could come in and put a garage up there. Uh, if it was, if it was an easement on the plat, then they couldn't build a garage in there without further steps, but, um, so.
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions for PJ on that? All right. Item number 24, which is items from the public. Anybody from the public? And would like to speak on anything? Seeing none. Item 25.
Item 25, items from staff. Uh, there's four on the agenda. We're adding a fifth, um, letter E. Uh, the first one is the, uh, building permit report. So for the new commissioners, there's a building permit report that we produce once a month for the Census Bureau and, uh, we also present it here. One, one thing that we include in here is the, uh, year contrast from this time last year and also the percentages instead of just giving you the report. Some items, uh, to talk about is single family homes are up 8% over this time last year. We've had 39, um, issued permits so far for single family homes. There's still more in the queue that are going through for approval. Uh, residential additions, the number 434CO, like your decks, covered porches, finishing basements and stuff. That's actually down 21% over this time last year. Uh, the removal of non-residential buildings, sheds, garages, that's up 52%. So neither people are getting rid of the old stuff or they're making room and they're making room for new things. And signs, uh, we usually don't talk about signs, but for some reason we've done over 28 so far this year, which is up almost 50%. Overall with building permits, um, we're at 461 issued as of the last day of June and, uh, 386 were issued, uh, at the end of June last year. So we're up, uh, 19% on building permits. That's not valuation, that's just a number of building permits.
Thank you. Any questions?
Item B is the South Dakota Planners Conference. Uh, it's coming up in Huron on October 17th and 18th, a two-day conference. If there's any planning commissioners interested in attending, they don't know the, um, um, schedule yet or who's gonna present, but the planning department pays for your, um, your hotel, your trip and all that kind of stuff if you wanna go. Usually if there's, um, staff going, we'll try and carpool with members from Rapid City that might be going, or a planning commissioner might jump in with us and we'll take a county vehicle. But if you're interested in going, let us know and we can get you on the list, uh, once they start getting their, um, agenda out and what their discussion topics are going to be.
Who, who, who attends that? People in similar positions in other counties or?
Yeah, it's all the way from, uh, county commissioners, sometimes a mayor, vice mayors.
I see.
Uh, maybe just from top to bottom, we'll go to them.
Oh, sounds interesting.
There's a South Dakota Planners Conference and then there's also the West Planet, West Region Planners Conference. This is the smaller of the.
I see. So who organizes this?
There's a state association that puts it together. Yeah. For a long time, the chair actually was out of Spearfish, but I'm not sure where the new chair is located. I think you.
I went two years ago.
Sioux Falls?
Sioux Falls. Yeah. I think you were there too, right?
Yes.
Was it you, Barb? Was anybody else there or was it just us three?
I think it's just me, you and Barb from here, but we went with the chair from Spearfish and, um, one of their planning commissioners went as well.
Right.
Yep. Usually about a couple hundred people, maybe.
Absolutely.
But we'll bring you more information as we, as we get it. Yep.
All right. C.
Okay. Uh, item C, there was a, there was a national flood conference, uh, held in Phoenix, Arizona. Um, Kathy, Brittany and I are all certified flood plain managers, so we have to keep up our continuing education credits. Um, this is an independent organization separate from FEMA. However, FEMA has a very strong presence, so I just kinda wanna give you a little bit of, um, some of the takeaways that I got from it. For those that aren't aware, um, our involvement is with the National Flood Insurance Program, which was an act of Congress in 1968. Um, the county's involvement in the National Flood Insurance Program allows homeowners that are in special flood hazard areas or even outside of those areas to receive, uh, insurance for their properties in case of, uh, damage to the property, they can get some money back. For a long time, uh, pretty much every, if I remember correctly, everybody would, all the homeowners would contribute, contribute into the system and if a million dollar home was to, um, be flooded and destroyed, then everybody had to pay for that insurance. Uh, after a while though, it is decided that that wasn't correct and so that only people that are in those areas that carry the insurance pay for other people that are in those areas. Cause if you can imagine a lot of coastal houses would get, or homes that would get flooded, those, those are repetitive loss properties and those can be very pricey. So they kind of kept it internally. With that move though, um, it is suffering and is expending a lot of money. Um, and I believe it's millions and millions of dollars in debt. And it's actually, I believe, one discussion item at Congress right now of whether they're going to further fund or how much money they're gonna fund to NFIP. Um, as you know, we are, uh, working on being involved in the community rating system. I was able to hold a one-on-one meeting with the, um, separate company that, that does all of that for us. The community rating system is a scale from 10 to one. The lower you are, the more restrictive your flood ordinance is. Um, the lower you go on the scale, the higher the discount for people that are, uh, in special flood hazard areas that hold, or no, I guess I should just say people that hold flood insurance. Um, it's anywhere from 5% down to about 45% discounts and some people can be paying, you know, thousands of dollars a year on flood insurance. So the more that we put in place in our flood damage prevention ordinance, um, and if they like what we're doing, the further discounts they can send off to the NFIP and then our residents can save money over the long run. So we're still working with FEMA to get our letter of good standing. Uh, they paid us a community assistance visit, I think it was about a couple of years ago, from Tom Bernie from Region 8 from FEMA. Um, all he really had a concern with is that we just go back and get some as-built, um, studies for some of the residential structures that were built in the county. Uh, we, he identified five. We went back a few more years and we pulled out about 12 more just to be safe. And we've gotten as-built back from all but three right now. And Tom is working on going through everything and making sure everything is in place and we'll get with the new step. And this has been at least a two and a half year process so far, but the real work starts when the community rating system, um, begins because there's, it's very big on public input and public notification. And that's also one of the things that FEMA is working on that I got from the conferences. They're looking at restructuring how they discuss with people what happens during floods. It's one thing to say, okay, well, we got 24 inches of rain within two days and it's this percentage and that percentage and it's a hundred-year flood, but it's not registering with people. So FEMA is actually really, as, at, at this conference is really discussing how can we better communicate to the public? And how can local agencies better communicate to the public what flood risk really is? And how can we communicate what has happened? I mean, there was the 100-year flood that was determined by Dale Tech from Rapid City that just occurred back in May. It was localized here in the area and that was two to four inches in what, half hour? I think it's one of the things that I read. Nowhere near what happened in the 72 flood, but because we do have better systems in place, better stormwater runoff, um, it didn't have as big of effect as it, or impact as it could have, even though it did wash some vehicles down into the, the stormwater drains. I mean, it's, it's gonna happen. And one of the things that came out of this is somebody had mentioned, it's not the rain that falls that's the problem, it's what happens to that rain once it hits the ground. That's what causes flooding. So working with our emergency medical, uh, emergency management, um, director Dustin and also with Brittany for stormwater, um, if those things aren't working, then we're not really doing flood plain management. We could do a, we could do an application over here, make sure you're built to a certain depth here, but if Brittany's not working on her stormwater management, the city's not working on theirs because we're interconnected and working with Dustin. Luckily we have really, really good working relationships. Um, and FEMA sees that, so that's how, um, they're going to recommend, that's why, one of the reasons why they're gonna recommend us for the CRS program eventually, whenever they're ready. Um, one item that us, also came up as note and Sandy, you're gonna be interested in this, is a reevaluation of how equalization departments and how assessors look at properties that are in floodways. Um, they're saying that a general trend around the country is that a property that is in a special flood hazard area that is not flood mitigated or built to a higher standard is not priced higher than, than maybe a neighboring property that isn't built to withstand the floods. I did check with the, um, the vice director, the, the assistant director for the Office of Equalization and he said they don't look at that. When they're out there assessing, they don't look that if somebody has spent money on flood mitigation measures, it doesn't change the valuation of the property. Now the people that were giving the presentation were assessors from around the country and they said, well, that's wrong and that needs to be looked at. So that's another thing that came out of this meeting and, um, there's a, um, some more. And, um, there's a, um, some more paperwork on it that I'm going to give Shannon, uh, Ripper, our, um, the director for equalization. So that he can possibly take that into consideration. Uh, FEMA is using a new term, they're calling, it's called moonshots. That's their aspirational goals. Um, one of the moonshots that they're looking to do is to double the insurance holders by twenty twenty-three. And let's see, I think I have a number in here. Nope, I don't have that number. But I think part of that is because a lot more people are at risk and also because the program is losing money, so they need more people to pay into it. The other moonshot is also the behavioral change that we talked about. Um, and their better communication and our better communication of what is happening. Uh, they want to get rid of what they call it hazard charity. They're defining that as the idea that it will be taken care of if it's bad enough. So even if people don't have flood insurance, they go, if it gets bad enough, someone's going to help me. Um, that's not always the, the case and they don't want people to have that false sense of security. So that's something that they're going to try and look at. That's what, but they understand that that's a behavioral change. That's going to take a lot longer time. It's not going to be, you put in a memo and people are going to follow it. But with that, they're also looking to get people more involved in flood mitigation and flood, uh, flood management. And like I said, rediscuss and discussing again what is going on and better communicate with people. So one of the items that they used was, uh, what had happened with Hurricane Harvey. And you could say all day long, twenty-seven trillion gallons of water fell and that it was a fifty thousand year storm. But this is one of the examples of what is twenty-seven trillion gallons of water look like compared to Houston. So it's these type of things that they're looking to put out there for the people that are more visual instead of verbal when they're learning. So I just kind of stole that one. I thought that was kind of an interesting thing. So that's pretty much about the, uh, that's about it for the update there.
Awesome. Any questions?
I just have a question. Uh, yeah, I'm always struck with, I, I went through the seventy-two flood, of course, and I, it was a remarkable experience on many levels. But anyway, I'm always struck when I watch the news and I see the Mississippi Valley, uh, consistently being flooded. Even though there's, you know, there's a great number of engineering, uh, mechanisms in place to minimize that, but it still happens. And people move right back into the same homes. And I'm sometimes struck, you know, the, the floodplain concept that we have here was so extraordinarily expensive. That I don't think it's ever really been a pimped much of anywhere else. But how do you minimize the impact of somebody having flooding shares? Their house floods out and they come out, they get another? I mean, it's just endless and, uh, is, is there any effort to actually put in place somehow floodplains in those areas which habitually have high water and, and destructive floods?
Yep. If it happens over and over again, it's called repetitive loss. Eventually you're going to lose insurance. They won't insure you anymore if there's a repetitive loss. Also, if you have a structure that's built, say at ground, at grade and the flood, base flood elevation is one foot up and you flood. And you, you have one foot of standing water in your house, well, along with all the debris and sewage and mud and sticks and everything else that's in there. If you're able to repair that at a cost less than fifty percent of the assessed value. You don't have to change anything other than your improvements, the drywall, carpet, furniture, that kind of thing. If you have to get back to normal and spend more than fifty percent on that structure. Now you, it's called substantial improvement because you've been substantially damaged. Now you might actually even have to remove the house or raise it up over the base flood elevation or higher. So there's, uh, substantial improvement, substantial damage policies and then also repetitive loss properties.
Efforts to somehow change the sort of architecture, if you will, of, of, of the housing in that area. To, to minimize flood effects, yeah.
Absolutely. And one of the things that we do in the county, um, right now our ordinance says that you can build to the base flood elevation. You don't have to build above it. We encourage people to build above it.
Right.
And when we update this, we're going to, we're looking at what's called a freeboard. It's a, a standard across the country and FEMA is pushing that people be at least one foot above the base flood elevation. So that one foot is called freeboard. Some communities have a foot and a half, two feet, three feet up, depending on, on where they are. The higher you go, the less the insurance is. It also creates a lot more gra- uh, groundwork and this actually came up as one of the discussion items in the session. That some communities now are recognizing builders that build, um, with floodplain mitigation standards in mind. Again, we don't have building codes right now, but, uh, there is a recognition. It's not saying that this builder is better than another and we recommend them, just that this builder has, uh, reached a certain standard or does certain, uh, has, does certain things or has certain building practices that the county recommend, that the county recognizes or there's certain training they went through. Similar to what we do with our septic, uh, trainer, uh, pumpers and installers where they have to go through a certain number of, uh, training hours a year to be on our certified list. So that was a kind of an intriguing thing, something that we could look at doing. But FEMA is pushing for a one-foot standard freeboard across the country. Now it's up to every community to do what they want. They, they're not going to require it. Right now FEMA says at the base flood elevation is okay, but we recommend higher.
Interesting, yeah. Any further questions? Thanks for the in-depth breath on that one. That was a, that was a lot of.
Well, I had three pages of it, but I only read two, so.
Well, thank you. All right, next item, uh.
The next item is the discussion of county ordinance violation report. This came up, uh, with a discussion between Travis and I. We do the building permit report. We also have an ordinance officer, Mike King, who does all our ordinances, who keeps track of things, um, in our track it system. There was some discussion, um, especially because of the special animal keeping committee. That's, I think that's where this came out of.
I think it's where we were, yeah.
Yeah, of what complaints are repetitive, what kind of things, and the board wanted to see that. Or the, the discussion of whether the planning commission wanted to see that. We would do it on the off weeks of the building permit or we could do it on the same week, it doesn't matter. What's going to be a challenge for us is figuring out how to produce that report because there's a lot of, um, conversation, he said, she said, on this date I visited. That's the kind of stuff we don't want to get out.
I would think substantiated reports, not the, I call in and then I don't want to make a, yeah.
But I didn't know if it was something that, that you wanted to see, it would be extra on our effort to, to produce it for you, but we don't know if you guys wanted to do it or not. So Travis wanted to put it up, if I believe, to speak for you, put it up to the planning commission.
No, that's, yeah, we had, had that discussion. And so it was supposed to be on here just for us to discuss it. Is, is it something that any of us might even find valuable? Probably in the essence of if there's, um, repeat offenders, it might be valuable, uh, especially if they're coming up for other things. But other than that, I'm not, you know.
And I just need a clarification on what would be an offense. I mean, are you talking about chickens in the yard or?
Well, any, any violation of the ordinance, right? Is that what we're talking about? I, I don't think we were isolating it just to chickens in this particular case. I was talking about.
Right, it came up during a special animal keeping committee with this, the chicken committee.
All right, thank you.
Um, there's tall grass, junk vehi- junk on the property.
I see, I see.
Junk vehicles, there, there's a, there's a number of things, but again, you'd only see them in one month increments.
Right.
Or we could do it twice a year and you get it halfway through.
You know, I think it would be interesting and, and I think every six months is fine, but I think it would be interesting to see which ordinances people are having a hard time complying with in general, just as a kind of a point of refu- reference as to. And those ordinances might, I mean, if, if there's some disconnect between how people really kind of live and operate and the ordinance, we might want to take a look at it and, and some of them, of course. Even though, like for example, the tall grass or the junk vehicles, we probably wouldn't want to change, even though maybe there's some issues complying with them. But I, I think that would be really interesting to see which ones people are having a hard time living with.
And what you're going to see a lot of, and I guess one point of clarification, we use the word ordinance. There's the zoning ordinance and then there's a county ordinance. The county ordinance is the tall grass and the junk vehicles. That's ordinance one oh six. Um, so the commissioners have that for the county. There's a, there's a number of them. The zoning ordinance, uh, he does a few of those, uh, when we ask him to. I can guarantee you what you're going to find is that neighbors don't get lung.
Yeah.
And that's what, the, the bulk of our complaints are, is neighbor complaining about neighbor.
And I'd be okay to. I, I think it would, but I don't think it asked, my view, personal view is that this doesn't need to be. In fact, annually would be fine for me, just to kind of just, but just to provide that information.
We could do it once a year.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm really ambivalent on this, on the timing.
You're talking about just a, a list and the number of complaints?
Yeah.
Not the details.
No.
Right, it would have the complaint number, what the complaint was about.
Yeah.
And that's about it. It would, it would, it would take, uh, IT staff at the city to redo a report for us, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We don't want to have too much information out.
Right.
Yeah, you, we may discover that it's of little or no use, but the only way we find out is actually that we do have it, you know.
PJ, um, is this just complaints based or is there any, when ordinance enforcement's done, is it based on complaints all the time or?
Both. And some of them come from, uh, Department of Equalization and it's, um, I guess that before Mike tries to really work with, uh, I said it before the meeting, so you guys wouldn't have heard it. Um, Mike really tries to work with a lot, and Cassie too. Uh, tries to work with the landowners and the neighbors to, to, to get things done, so it doesn't elevate to the point of having to document it. Um, sometimes though, the neighbors come in and they're like, here's your complaint and it's in writing and so we have to log it. One of the things that Mike's really good about is not spending taxpayer money on abatements. Because he, he'll work with the landowners and get them, I think FEMA could probably learn from him. He gets them to want to change it, want to improve it. Takes some little extra time, but Mike's very good at it.
I'm, I'm interested in these reports. Um, when would be maybe the first time we'd see one of these?
That would be up to you.
I'd like to see one soon. I think that could be, like Kathy was saying, pretty, uh, informative.
We, we could produce a January through June of this year report.
That'd probably be good. That way we can get an idea and then we might all decide, yep, one year is good enough. Or we might say, oh, maybe twice a year, just because there's a lot to look at. I don't know. I don't know what the numbers are, so, but I think that would give us a good idea.
It won't, it won't have nearly the type of information that the building permit does. The building permit report, and that's a little bit of information. It's going to have even less than that.
Fair enough.
Do, do we need a motion to do that?
Nah, general consensus is okay, but when would you like to see the January through June?
How long will it take you to make it? Cause I know you said it's a tax, it's a little bit taxing on the staff, so.
Well, it's really going to depend on how long it's going to take, uh, Rapid City. They oversee the track it system where all this is in. And so they have to redo one of the reports. And so when you say to print this, it's going to only pull in the information we wanted to. Right now it pulls in the description field, which is where all of the notes are. And that's the one piece that we have to get out. So it's really going to depend on how long it takes them to update it.
So can you let us know next meeting to let us know if there's any, if it's going to be extended amount of time from, like, if it takes three months, I don't know what's.
I, I would predict, if we can't get it to you by next meeting, we definitely do it by the first meeting in Au- in August.
Okay, so you think it's viable to do it?
I'm hoping.
Well, let's just.
But I'll update.
Let's plan for Aug- the, the August meeting and that way if something hiccups or if you find out something different, you can let us know at the next meeting that this is the hiccup.
Okay.
And then we can move forward from there. How's that sound for everyone?
Sounds good.
Okay.
The, the additional item that we're adding, uh, one of the motions from the Board of Commissioners was that every department needs to look at reducing their budgets by roughly two percent, one point nine seven, I believe. So for us, that's a little over ten thousand dollars. So what we're asking from the planning commission is, um, a general consensus that we no longer mail your, our packets to you. Um, that we can put them in three-ring binders and that you can come in and pick them up. They are available online once they're scanned, usually about Thursday morning or Thursday afternoon. Um, you can look at them there. If you don't pick up your packets by Friday at five, then they will be here for you in the morning. The reason we're asking that is it's about a twelve hundred dollar, just in mailing alone is a twelve hundred dollar savings on the ten thousand plus that we're looking to, to cut. I'm not including staff time and, and the other stuff, but just alone, it costs about fifty dollars a meeting to mail these out.
Do you need a motion for that?
Just looking for consensus.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we already talked a little bit, for those who are interested.
That we can't pick it up anytime on Friday?
Or as soon as it's done on Thursday, we'll send out, we'll, we'll have to come up with a new routine, but I believe similar to what had happened before when we had a really big packet. We sent it out to you guys, the link prior to you even getting the packet, so it would give you time to read through it. So once packets are scanned, we can send out an email to the entire planning commission saying, uh, here's the link to the packet. Um, it's, there are, they are available and that's how we can make it work.
And they just come in Thursday or Friday after they're done and pick it up if you're in town or whatnot.
Yeah, or I think there was some discussion of not even picking up the packet until Monday at the meeting because you've looked at it online all weekend.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as I've mentioned already, I, I'd have two requests. One is that the, the link that we get to the document, the packet, is bookmarked, so we can just go to individual items rather than having to scroll through. And secondly, if there could be a PDF of the agenda attached, so that we can easily just print or look at the agenda independent of the packet.
Sure.
So those would be very helpful things.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any further questions or comments on it?
Would you just want to do a link to a document or just send the document in the email? It's going to be a PDF, right?
Well, when we sent the, when we created the PDF and then sent that out, it was bookmarked. When we made the PDF and put it online and sent that URL out, URL out, it wasn't bookmarked. It's not bookmarked. So I don't know if there's some disconnect in the PDF software and Adobe software, but, uh, I'll talk with our IT and see what we can do. So it's bookmarked in both cases.
I was just thinking if it was just emailed directly to us rather than us having to follow the link. And I guess either way it does work, but.
And we can do that, um, but it's probably also a good thing if we look at, if the online link is bookmarked as well.
Right, yeah, just, I, I like to hold it in my hand, read it and color it.
Okay.
So if you're going to stop that, I'll be happy to pay for the cost to print my package. That's, that's no problem. Thank you.
Yeah, we did actually get new printers, just, and they're faster and they're a lot cheaper, so, um, it don't cost as much or take nearly as long to print anymore. So your packets will start coming in three-ring binders, not with, uh, the black binders like they normally do. Um, we're also going to produce for everybody from the planning commission, new ordinance booklets. If you, I don't know if Jim or Sandy brought yours today. Um, it has the zoning ordinance, the floodplain ordinance, the subregs.
Yes.
Uh, the other one, it's not going to be two inches thick, but, um, with the changes that we do, it'll be easier to change them out. And it puts everything in one concise place. So we're trying to make it a little more user-friendly for everybody. So, but that's all I have, sir.
All right. All right. Item number twenty-six is items from the membership. Kathy?
I have one thing. You know, it occurred to me when we were talking about those layout plats that are in, um, these HOAs and the covenants that are in, you know, and contrary to what the requests are that come to us. And, and I, I mean, I appreciate and accept the fact that we're not, we're not out to enforce the covenants. It's not our job. But, um, it does seem to me that considering this is the homeowners association's job and it's a civil matter. That we should try to bu- build in our process some way of making sure that that's, that notifications happen. And, and so I'm assuming that there would be required an ordinance change so that in properties that are part of a homeowners association, rather than just the five hundred feet, you send notices, we'd have to add something like send notices to the, the, I mean, is there a president of homeowners associations or some?
A board, yeah.
The, the board or something, uh, because I think it, I mean, I do think that it's important that we make sure that those notifications get done. And I don't know, I, I guess I'm, I'm just think, asking you to think about this. There's probably pros and cons to it. Uh, but think about it and see, you know, what, if it makes any sense, if there's any downsides. What would be required of us to make ordinance changes? You know, how that process would work?
Sure.
If we wanted to move forward, but just, you know, work that through a little bit if you would, please.
Yeah, in some cases, not in all. In some cases, if there's an HOA, there's also a road district. And that's a, a layer we can pull up on Rapid Map and we'll send, uh, when we do request for comments, we'll send it out to the, a member of the executive board, usually the president or vice president of the road district, so they can comment back. And what we're finding more often is a road district executive board is also your HOA board. And road district is usually more involved than an HOA is. But on the bigger scheme, one of the items that we discussed was possibly requiring notifications to be sent out, hearing letters to be sent out for plating process. It came up, uh, like you were concerned about it with today. It also came up with a, a possible developer or a developer east of the airport where they had gone through the, they had gone through, uh, the layout plant process. Um, and then it wasn't until the rezoning came up that, that the neighbors had heard about it. So we've, we've heard that concern a few times and, uh, it's more, it's more, uh, owners on the applicant. If we're, if they have to go through a three-step process, that's a layout plat, preliminary, preliminary plat and a final plat. If they have to notice all three times, or if they go through the two-step process of a layout and a preliminary or a, and a minor, do they notice twice? Or do they do it at the final step? Um, so those are things that we'd have to work out. Cause it can get expensive. So those are things that we'd have to work out because it can get expensive.
I understand, but just, you know, I'd just like you to think it through.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
And we can also put a sign on the property.
Any other items from the membership?
That's the cheapest way of doing it.
I will not be here July twenty-third. I'm looking at that.
Nor will I.
Do what?
Nor will I.
Will you? Are you supposed to be here except that you're not going to be?
I believe I'm supposed to be here.
Okay, who are you swapping with?
I don't know yet. I gotta ask.
You gotta find out. We'll do it. Fair enough, but I know I will be down in Custer for that week, church camp as a counselor, so I won't be here that week just for everyone's input. I guess we'll have to find out if Richard's going to be here as well and if not, sunny.
You'll, you're also going to be moved next meeting. So we put the vice chairs next to the chair. So sorry, you're going to lose your spot.
Darn.
Oh. All right, anything else from the membership? Seeing none, I've entertained a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.